I'd like to call the meeting in order. Thank you all for coming tonight, welcome our guests. But I would like for Mr. Clifford, we did some prayer thirty seconds at a time, and then the prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here safely tonight despite the weather. Please guide us home, guide us in our decisions. Let us listen with open ears and open hearts and make the decisions that are best for all of the residents of the James Island Public Service District. I would like to especially call attention to the death of Mr. James Gaines Sr., longtime James Island resident, and a close friend of mine, Mr. Kurt Schneider. So if we could have thirty seconds silence for these dearly departed souls and anyone else that's near and dear to your heart. Ben Louder's wife passed away too, one of our longtime employees. Please keep these people in your prayers and your thoughts and know that their family needs healing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Freedom of Information Act. Notice of this meeting and its agenda were provided to all news media and persons requesting notification. Roll call?
Roll call.
All righty, Commissioner Brown Crouch.
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford.
Here.
Commissioner Engelmann.
Here.
Commissioner Loughlin.
Here.
Commissioner Platt.
Here.
Commissioner Woolsey.
Yes.
Commissioner Poston.
Here.
All right. We're going into oral and written positions. We have starting a new thing. You have to be signed about start of the meeting at seven because it's kind of disruptive to somebody talking and somebody signing it. And this White on this side, we have disclosure to read.
Public comment disclosure. The commission will not accept public comment. Each person who wishes to be recognized during this period must have signed his or her name and address on a list maintained by the commission clerk in order to be recognized. When recognized, please state your name and address. Each person recognized during this period shall be limited to no more than three timed minutes unless additional time is granted by the commission. All remarks shall be addressed to the commission as a body and not to any member thereof. Please remember, public comment is for the purpose of permitting the public to address the commission, not to debate or berate the commission, individual commissioners, or the district's employees. Any person making impertinent or slanderous remarks, or who becomes obnoxious or disruptive while addressing the commission, shall be asked to conform his or her conduct, and if the person does not conform his or her conduct to that appropriate for the meeting, then the person may be removed and barred from further comments. No person, including the commissioners and the person having the floor, shall be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through a member of the commission during this period. No question shall be asked of a commissioner or staff person for the purpose of eliciting a response during this portion of the meeting. Lyman Brown.
Hold on one second. I sat down and thought I figured it out.
There you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Lyman Brown. I live at sixteen fifty Elias Lane, the well on James Island. My question is, on my street, we have sewer, but no water. And I was wondering why the sewer bill is higher than some folks who lives on the other street who has city and water. It seem like our bill is almost twice as much as those one who have water and sewer. So I would like an answer to that question.
We'll get someone to get in touch with you in the morning. Probably the district manager, because somebody assigned to answer that.
Sorry, thank you.
We will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. Harriet Revis.
My name is Harriet Revis, and I live at five oh nine West Wimbledon Drive over in the Marlboro subdivision, and I am the president of the neighborhood association. And our big concern has to do with the pollution from the James Island Creek. And that's, of course, directly related to the sewer overflow and then the other sources. We, our neighborhood receives backflow from the creek, so if that creek is polluted, it comes into our backyards. So we are very concerned about that. And we are aware that FEMA, and I think DHEC, has a mandate that you will study and come up with solutions, and so we would like to know what you will be doing regarding that.
Thank you. We'll get someone to get in touch.
Mary Brager.
Thank you for your time. I live at one seven two three Oak Point Road on James Island Creek, and I encourage you to make the task force for James Island Creek with the city, the town, the county, and concerned citizens, because we are one of the most polluted creeks in all of South Carolina. And I know there is a, they're getting ready to sell the parcel across from me on James Island Creek, and if that is rumored to be a hotel, if it is a hotel that's buying it, that you would consider having impervious surfaces, not letting it be too tall, and just think about the people that live here, that we need your services to protect our creek. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
That is it for this conference period.
All right. Next is the consent agenda. May we have a motion to approve A, B, C, and D?
I make the motion.
Second. Is there any discussion or corrections? Roll call vote, please.
Okay, Commissioner Brown Crouch.
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford.
Yes.
Commissioner Engelmann.
Yes.
Commissioner Loughlin.
Yes.
Commissioner Platt.
No.
Commissioner Poston.
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey.
Yes.
All right, motion carries six to one.
Thank you. Number five is the January twenty twenty KIPST management report, Mr. Sebo.
All right, I could call your attention for that, and everything looks pretty good. Part of the discussion, there was Commissioner Clifford has gone around to so far the fire stations and, you know, met and introduced herself to everybody, and a few of them have raised concern about being required to be here on stage during commission meetings. And as long as no one has any issue with that, I will stop that process.
You're talking about the firemen complaining?
A meeting. Any concerns?
Wow. I am now eighty years old, and I may have a heart attack at any time, and I want to feel safe, knowing that we have one of the firemen who will come and save my life.
There's three right there. Any other concerns? Can you apply more?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't think that many, that any of you were here in the evening of twenty years ago when Commissioner George Flynn was sitting approximately right here, and he had a cardiac event, and it's likely he would not have survived the night if there had not been a firefighter here training to give us such situations. So I joined Commissioner Tom Pyle to propose that move.
Look, I would just like to say that, you know, I do not have the understanding of being as old as you and having birthday, but because of my health conditions, as most of you are aware of, we've had to call I'm in one a number of times, and they were always there first. There was always, always firefighters there and EMS and police responding to my home, to work, to different areas where I would go into a deep tonic-clonic, and I'm at high risk to die from, so they were still there immediately. And so, like, they're just, they're such fast responders that I am sure that if we did have such a situation, we would be able to get them here in enough time.
Let me get the full team.
I was employed by Berkeley County for many, many years, and I had to go through training twice a year. I can operate that AED when I walk into a room. That's the first thing I look for, is that and that fire extinguisher. And I can operate them, and I can do chest compressions and whatever else. And I'm sure there's, how many of our employees, other than firemen, have to take these classes?
We don't require it of anybody, but we do offer it, and there are several that are certified.
Well, I'd like to see more, but the chief, I'm sure, knows how to do CPR, and he knows how to work that machine. So we have one, they have two people here that can save a life.
I do CPR.
Yeah, everybody does.
Well, I do CPR.
I'm sure twenty years ago, I'm sure twenty years ago, that AED, the defibrillator machine was not over there twenty years ago. And we have right around the corner here, a EMS station, and there's a fire station down there, and there's a new one coming online real soon, right down the street. I just feel like it's not necessary. And it's unfair to our other citizens. Somebody could be in a church across the island having a heart attack too. We don't have a fireman there, and yet our firemen have to get their stuff together, get out there on Signal Point Road, and drive down the street to get to those people. I think we're being very selfish. Anybody can have a heart attack, we don't have to be old, and I think we should not just hog the firemen for ourselves.
It's not just a matter of them being in attendance. It is an in-service engine truck that's here that's manned with three to four firemen that have to take their equipment with them. Right now, they're seating them there so that we don't violate our very own fire codes of having too many people in the room. So they're going to gear her up, jump back in the car, turn it on, drive down the road, and do you want to have the conversation with the person at the accident that they may be going to, that one minute earlier, they could have been there, but they were way down here with us? I know how to operate an AED, I'm CPR certified, and I don't see the need in it, and I think it's not a very good use of our taxpayer money. Sorry.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I understand the importance, but Commissioner Clifford was saying about a minute, but it could work the other way. Perhaps by having some firefighters here, firefighters, they could get to the location, emergency location, a minute sooner. It doesn't have to be a minute slower after. And just in general, Madam Chair, and I know it's coming from a lame duck commissioner that won't carry much weight, but gee, so many changes, so fast, and perhaps some of the changes being made have merit, but when there's such an onslaught, I think it's awful just to slow down and approach some of these proposed changes more deliberately.
Well, I have agreed with Ms. Clifford on many cases, because I recently was thinking, I went to a banquet, and the next day I knew I had several people standing over me. We called an EMS, and I thought, you better cancel them. But, you know, I'm seventy years old, I have five stents, and it does give me a little pause for the cause, so unfortunately, I would normally go that way, but this time I'm going to stay, and I think it's good to have them, you know? Even some of you young pups in there, there aren't many over there either, but I think that knowing that somebody's sitting there, case something does happen, is a good deal. So what do we want to do with Mr. Sebo about this?
Then we'll be here.
Yes.
As y'all know, I spent about thirty years working in healthcare, and this is the non-hospital most discussed thing that healthcare people have, whether it is for a small group of people or whether it is for the community. And it ends up being that whoever the party in charge of where the firemen are, or the EMS responders are, they're the ones who are going to be making the decision. I'm going to stay out of any kind of vote on this, because I have opinions on both sides of this, from how we work this, and let the rest of the commission.
We don't have a vote on this tonight on our agenda anyway, but, you know, if we want Mr. Chief Sebo to bring it back, we can vote on it again, you know? I'm like somebody else, you know, I can certainly, at some nights, we've had seventy-five people in here and eighty people out there, and, you know, it does get a little bit contentious. It's much better now. But, you know, I'm going to let Chief Sebo bring it back to us for a vote. How about that?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, and I appreciate very much your making attention, letting me speak a third time with this, but I don't think that many of you know, but I was recently wearing a heart monitor. I was supposed to be wearing it for two weeks, but last Monday, after taking a bath, I got wetting the cell off, called the doctor's office, said, well, you have ten days, that's okay, come in, I'll be going in the day after tomorrow. So maybe that's just first on, and one of us used the term selfish. I don't think it's selfish in a situation like this, that it's not only for this particular commissioner, Commissioner Brown Crouch, or anyone else, it might be correct, but we're all susceptible to cardiac event, and we have constituents who come here, and very often, they proceeding become very tense and strained, and that in itself is conducive to a cardiac event.
Well, we'll put it on our next agenda, and we'll vote on it. I think right now, we have four meetings to keep, and so we'll put it on the agenda, and we'll vote on it next time. Is that okay? All right, number?
All right, first, many of you know that Tamara White is an extraordinary person. She does a lot of work beyond what her position was as being my admin assistant and the commission clerk. Last week, I promoted Tamara to the human, the administrative services manager. So she will work much more closely with me as my executive assistant. She will take on strategic planning. She will oversee the administrative building. She has indirect report lines to Amanda and to Stacy over at Solid Ways to help them work on projects. And the idea is that she's going to work towards training and will be my second if I'm not here. So the department has, it will take nothing away from them, they will continue to do their jobs, but she will learn, just as I'm learning, we're going to learn right alongside each other, and allow her to spread her wings a little bit. Congratulations to Tamara. I did send to you guys the budget spreadsheets that I believe are correct, so if you haven't looked over those and have any questions, please ask, they are there, hope they're correct. And I also want to let you know that at this time, I'm not filling the vacated payroll position, I'm dividing those duties between human resources and finance, and try to save the public service district some money by doing that. When I really looked and considered payroll, it's not a full-time job, and that position was given extra duties, if you will, to make it full-time, and between leases, area and human resources and finance, they've agreed to pick up those duties, and I will not be filling that at this time. Later on, if I'm not the one that you guys select, and then the person wants to come in and change that, or we see that it needs to be changed, we can do that then, but for right now, we're not going to fill it.
Now.
Give us a big, a big hand.
Now.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't really.
Oh, yeah.
I have one.
Yes.
As someone who clearly recognized this was potential many years ago, that's a decade ago, and shared it with his in district manager, I'm really delighted with this.
Thank you.
George, he's a George. All right, now, we will go to, I want to remind all of y'all in discussion, we still have an executive session, so don't bog this train down so much. Not about what we just talked about, but on that side of. Number six is approval to provide permanent easement to Charleston Water System for a new water man. May we have a motion to approve?
No move.
Set aside. Um, Mr. Poston say, well, we're getting the full to get here first, so. I need discussion on this, I'm not even going to look, I know you're ready.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm, I'm really opposed to this, and that seems to be often the case, I might be a minority of one, but nevertheless, considering how Charleston Water System has jerked around the James Island Public Service District over the years, I really, let's say, the wisdom, and giving them a permanent easement, perhaps a temporary easement that could be extended from time to time, a permanent easement, it doesn't seem warranted.
I'm, Mr. Flum. Sure, sure.
I'm on the same pathway as Commissioner Platt, and CWS has yanked this entire island around, all the way around from time to time, and I have four questions about it. Number one, was this an act of thought when they realized that they had screwed up on some, in marketing some plans, and they decided, well, what we need to do is see if we can talk them into it?
Hold on. Mr. Hoffman, can you provide some insight in this, or do you want Chief Sebo to?
Oh, I can, if you wish.
Yeah, come up, please. Will you answer all four?
Sir? No. First answer.
So it might have a thought.
No. It was caused because of the, there's a ductile iron line that runs across the cut right now, and they're putting a new hydicy pipe, plastic pipe in there, HDPE pipe, and they're going to bend in the line in front of the fire station, come around the back of the fire station. They need that property to put a underground vault in to make the connection there that will supply water to this island. So it's an important thing for all of us. And they're paying us eight thousand dollars for it.
Why were they so late on the request? I mean, how far along is the process before they decided this, oh, well, we need to go to Plan B?
Well, when I found out the line was starting to deteriorate, they needed to replace it.
Was it surveyed before they started doing all the work?
Well, that's where, the line is adjacent to our property right now, so to expand that and put that vault in, it had to creep over into that property. It's a piece of property, most of these guys didn't even know we owned, because it extends down the road like an easement. And we're just putting that vault in there, the underground, we don't lose the use of that property, we can't build anything permanent there, nor would we, because it's so small. So that's, that's why they're doing it there.
Okay, next question.
So they're not going to have any impact? Are they coming from, are they coming from the riverland terrace side up into the property, or are they tapping?
They're coming across the river. Well, I had a plan that I can show you.
You want my packet?
Just a minute. If you want to take this and plug it into that.
No, I already have it on the computer.
Can we have the real short version?
Yeah, it won't take long.
I have concerns about this, go along with what Mr. Platt was saying. And one of the things that bothers me about it is, other than the fact that it seems like it's a last-minute change in plan, is our fire station out there essentially is surrounded by city property, and the only way in and out is along that little section of Plymouth Avenue. And I know that we didn't know, quote unquote, about the fact that we owned, and what's so funny about it is it's, we don't own any of Plymouth Avenue, but we own about twenty-four feet on the east side of it, which right now is gravel, and then there's a fence in the middle of it, and there's another four feet or so onto the property. So what they're talking about is, I mean, they have an entire lot to come in on.
I think they've been pretty apprised of what they're doing with us, though they're not trying to shut us out of being able to get on our property, and pretty much, you know, it's going to happen. Do we have any other discussions?
Oh, I was going to say, I think eight thousand dollars for that little tiny piece of land is a good deal. And we all need water, and we only have one person we can get it from.
Right. All right, I'm going to call it, end of this discussion.
I'm sorry, I'm not giving you up the floor on this.
I'm sorry, we are not going to bog down until half hour on the deal.
It's under G.
All right, I'll call the questions. Stanley can vote. Thank you.
All right.
Ms. Ivy, we've got to call the question.
I have your objection.
Okay.
Where am I then?
Objection? No.
Please make sure that my objection to that, my discretion being called, can stop.
A nice second.
You second.
I think you have to vote on calling the question, all right, Mr. Jeff? You call the question, you have to vote on whether you're going to stop the discussion and vote.
We'll wait, legal opinion?
It's under four.
On calling the question or voting?
On the appeal, I'll call on the question, I guess, the appeal.
Well, the call on the question is in the discussion.
And so it's up to the, I'm going to accept it to the bay. Have Mr. Moon option.
We had this before, we did vote on calling the question. Okay, and we have a roll call vote on calling the question.
You know, even if I were trying, and if you want to have me thrown in here, Madam Chair, go ahead and do that, but you know, what we're doing, we're violating one of the Bill of Rights provisions, freedom of speech, and gee, you know, some of the certain uniform, track that right, I jumped out of the airplane, couldn't say, but one other thing for freedom of speech, and if you're just trying to cut him off too severely, I mean, I'd agree with what you have to say too, but you know, let me have to say, he recognized, and you cut him off, and Madam Chair, that is not right.
Okay, that's so noted. We're going to vote on this.
Mr. Platt, you brought the Bible here, and you, you're supposed to honor the Bible if you're on our place.
All right, we're going to have a vote to call the question.
Who's the second?
You make the motion.
Ms. Poston. Okay. Commissioner Brown Crouch.
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford.
Yes.
Commissioner Engelmann.
Yes.
Commissioner Loughlin.
No.
Commissioner Platt.
No.
Commissioner Poston.
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey.
Yes.
Motion carries five to two.
Thank you.
I appeal that decision.
You're welcome to appeal that. I'm just saying, anybody can ask a question, and it's not time to get on any soapbox and pontificate, you know? We just need to go through these items that, this is a big deal to me. We need water on James Island, has they dirt, has they, have they dirted the land? Yes. Has the PSC stepped on people's rights when they didn't want to hook up to the steward services? Yes, so that's called progress. But can we have a roll call vote on number six?
Yep. Yes.
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Lachlan?
Number six is the?
Approval.
No.
Commissioner Platt?
Temptatively, no. Having in mind, you know, the action by the South Carolina Legislature twenty years ago, when they gave SC and D's permission to charge, you know, the rate pay is in advance of construction, and they live to regret it, and they just, that they didn't look at it. But I, you know, I, I.
I'm really not trying to be mean, I'm just saying, this is the time for sapphant or gas, we're talking about giving the people property to cut the water system for eight thousand. All right, we've finished.
Commissioner Poston?
Yes.
But that was not our.
Yes.
This is a zone, though.
Commissioner Woolsey?
We are not to have such discussion during that.
It's done, all right. Motion carries five to two.
Thank you.
And after the discussion, I can say why my vote is the way it was. I mean, I.
Item number seven is committees and James Island representative report.
Madam Chair, point of order.
Point of order upon you, Mr. Lachlan, we're done.
Point of order.
Number seven is committee and James Island representative report. Does anyone have a report tonight, mayor, town representative, party?
I, the Berkeley Charleston Dorchester Council of Government meetings, I felt like there was really nothing that would be of any interest to us. Transportation and rural areas and things like that, so nothing, nothing there.
Ms. White, I'll give you something in writing to be put into the minutes.
Anybody else have committee report or JIPST representative report? All right. Number eight, arts, comics, and newspaper articles, there's none. Number nine, we're going into the second round of oral and writ petitions. Has anybody signed in for the second round? Yes. Ricky Frayle?
Mr. Frayle, Everton Williams Road, I put this quickly on the last time, on an eight fee of ten dollars, additional fifty dollars in forty-five days. I wonder why is that?
Okay, can I get, well, we won't answer it here, but I'll get someone to call you. Did you contact any of my county officials about that?
Nobody contacted me.
Contact you.
Nobody contacted me.
They'll contact you tomorrow, let you know what I have to say. I know it's tough, I really do. Mary Fraser?
Oh, I have nothing else, thanks.
Okay, thank you. So that's all the speakers.
Exit yes for the second comment.
We need the motion to go into executive session. So move.
Second.
All right.
I want to say that to say that I, I see this so out of state, and I'm not sure why that is. And thank someone who's had a quarter of a century's experience, that they're viewed as the part of the world war. And it's really ironic, not long ago, a fellow commissioner looked at me in the eye and said, you'd be sorry if you seen me go with more of experience. But that's the commission never votes for my father anymore. I don't fault that particular commissioner. You know, we never have to justify our votes, we can vote A and A and anything. But this is about going to executive session. It seems to be now routinely, every meeting, we have an executive session. And not only do we have executive sessions for regular meetings, but we call special meetings to have executive sessions. And I think we're doing too much in executive session in contrary to concept transparency. So I would hope that we would cease that practice. Thank you.
We'll sort it down, thank you. Okay, we're going roll call on this.
Yes.
To go into the executive session. Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Lachlan?
No.
Commissioner Platt?
No.
Commissioner Poston?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey? Motion carries five to two.
Mr. Platt?
You're going to protestation, right?
That barber.
I'm going to.
Are you ready?
Yes.
All right, the commission went into the executive session to discuss pending threat litigation by a James Island Public Service District employee. Discussion was had, but no action was taken.
I make a motion, we're done.
Second.
Roll call vote to adjourn, please.
Commissioner Brown Crouch?
Yes.
Commissioner Clifford?
Yes.
Commissioner Engelmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Lachlan?
No.
Commissioner Platt?
Hi.
Commissioner Poston?
Yes.
Commissioner Woolsey?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one.
We are adjourned.